Four, six o'clock, eight, nine. We get a roll call, please.
Brian.
Here.
Hey, Corbin.
Here.
Danielson.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Guy.
Here.
In the area.
Here. First item, approval of the agenda. We'll do a room second. There. Can you see? You go to that. We're ready. We have to come with the. I will put one in the technology. We will share again, single.
One more, all right. All right.
Hold it. Oh, there we go.
I just knew you. Yeah, first of all. There we go. Slide. Probably here. Okay. Next is consent agenda. I'll move you through. Brian, Sandy. They noted that only completely vote. It is approved, which takes us to the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action to be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. First thing we have is the library meeting report for them taken.
Hello, council. Um, well, I'm excited to be here to share the awesome things we did at fiscal year 2023. And it's always a little weird to talk about that fiscal year about six months after the fact. So forgive me if my memory is not perfect, but um, we had a. It felt like a very much return to normal, which is strange because I wasn't there when it was normal pre-pandemic. But uh, we had stability in staffing, stability in our hours, stability in what the things we offered. And because of that, I think we thought just huge amounts of increase and it felt like people thought of the library as part of their normal routine again, which was really nice. We had a lot of increases and a lot of great quantitative measurements that we take. Um, on that first page of our annual report, you'll see our circulation, which is kind of what people think of the library for, like to check things out. And we had a huge increase in digital circulation. So that's one of the things I think the pandemic really probably permanently changed for a lot of people. They're switching to looking at books and audio book on their devices rather than at the library itself. And so twenty-two point five percent increase over fiscal year 2022, which was kind of a lot of the still the height of the pandemic, really. So we're still seeing more people going to those digital um, books, audio books. We also offer some, some streaming options for people through hoopla. And so that's really great. Our physical circulation um, has grown, but not as high. And so, and we actually saw slight dips in young adult and children's books, um, BB and EBDs. And so um, that's where we see people are switching over to that digital means of circulation. And then in terms of patrons, we have over four hundred new patrons uh, in fiscal year 2023, which is a fifteen percent increase over previous fiscal year. A vast majority of those patrons are City of Nevada residents. The thirty-five point seven percent of other, what we do is if people can't offer proof of residency or proof of current address, we give them a limited use card where they can check out up to three items at one time. And that card is only good for two months before it expires and have to be renewed. So a lot of that other category is still City of Nevada residents. They just didn't have their, you know, their ID updated with their current address on it yet. And then the open access is residents of other cities of Iowa. So I live in Inkey, I am an open access patron. On the back side, actually, what I think is most interesting is I talked about how our digital circulation has increased. So those people don't have to come to the library to get what they need. However, if you look at our program attendance and our door count under other stats, those things have gone up immensely. In fiscal year 2021, our youth service librarian did everything virtually. And then in 2022, that is when we were starting with one youth librarian, having a gap with no youth librarian, and then starting a new one. And so our programs dipped there. And then in 2023, all of our youth programs were offered in person. And you can see we had huge numbers in attendance at our youth programs. Someone who's just done an amazing job. He has made so many relationships and connections with moms in Nevada, with parents and other caregivers, with teachers, and with the, most importantly, with the kids themselves. And so we're really proud of our program. And it's our, our teen and adult programs and then our all ages. So kind of like dental insurance stuff has all those same large increases. And our door count has increased by over ten thousand people. And I just think that's a true testament to what the library is supposed to be. I know the, the kind of thought of a library, oh, it's a place to check out books and you have to be quiet and, you know, shh, the librarian, they're gonna yell at you. And that we think that's not a library at all. And it, and not the Nevada Public Library. We want to be that place where the community can just go and be. And I think we've, we're really achieving that. We've got people who come and do puzzles. We've got people who come and just sit and have coffee, read the newspaper. We have people who come just to hang out and chat with each other. And it's all ages. And that's honestly like, that's why I got into this business. And I love seeing that. Our best days are when we are busy at the library. It may seem hectic and we may get a little frazzled, but like every time you talk to one of us, any of the librarians, we're all very excited by that, by those busy types. And then beyond the numbers, um, we had a lot of great highlights, including some of our programs that we've been offering, connections we've made with um, Main Street. We did some farmers market story times. We did um, some partnerships with Raising Readers and other groups. We attempted to have a volunteer fair to reach out to all the other great organizations in Nevada. And then we, the library is not a revenue generating, you know, service. We're just not, but we did find revenue streams that we didn't previously have. We got over six grams and I forget exactly how much money it was Marlon's to create spread in our Nevada. And it was, I mean, it was close to fifty thousand dollars, I think. And then uh, we fundraised for our summer reading program to get all those awesome uh, programs we have that brought the people in. And the businesses and the community members have just really gone above and beyond in helping us to provide these things to the community. We um, we have almost got all of our 2024 Storytale Books sponsored already and we're in January. So um, and I couldn't do it without the staff and without our amazing board. We've got six of our board members here. Emily Fulton, Lynn Landra, Tim McLaughlin, Teresa Presley, Jamie Woodard, and Allison Thieberson, and Priscilla Gammann had to go. Her, her young daughter did not want us to do this, so we had rescued her. But um, honestly, it's, it's the people in the community that we do this for. And it's the board, the community members who made it possible. Any questions?
I want to say thank you. I want to thank the board for serving you all do. And the night continues on the public forum. I do have a card here from Austin and Kevin Veer. You can make your way to the microphone there and state your name and address for the record and address the council.
Good evening, Captain Council. My name's Austin Veer. Reside here in Nevada, South of Town at six two seven oh eight Michelle Drive. We currently have three children. One of those is currently in Central Elementary. I just kind of wanted to speak tonight about safety in our schools. So you know, we have a great public safety team here in Nevada with Kurt and Ray, you know, both good friends of ours. Great job of leading our community. But with the uh, recent Perry incident and the incidents that just keep happening around the country, I think it's important to discuss a school resource officer in, in our public schools. You know, I know the town of Perry had a great response time, but it was still seven minutes. And I just think by allowing people that amount of time, that, that's a lot of time that they could do damage to a lot of young innocent kids. So um, just kind of wanted to talk to you tonight and see what the next steps were. If we could be involved in facilitating those, we would appreciate that. You know, we've been in the space with Marty as a school board president, the, and the superintendent might have a little bit to do with this decision. But just asked me about the issue and want to make sure that my kids and all the other kids are well taken care of and well prepared.
I'm Kevin Veer, sixty-seven and three, subset. Of course, we own a safety company, as you all know that. Been a Nevada citizen quite some time now and uh, just see a heck of an opportunity that we have as a city to make a statement. Not only in the state, the county, um, just in the nation to do something. Get a discussion started, talk about it. I believe it's not a Democrat, Republican, independent topic. It's uh, safe. It's for our children, it's for our teachers, it's for our coaches. So many things that I think that we can talk at a different time recorded. But uh, it'd be deterrent with vehicles. You see a lot of extra police cars around, like on to the same. We're just blessed to have an county in right across the street from our business, then the city of Nevada, ten officers. Mr. Uh, Bill, we, Rick, yeah. He uh, was a resource officer um, in, or several.
Kevin.
Kevin Button. Okay. So I mean, I haven't talked yet. I just think we have a lot of opportunity and just need to open it up for discussion. You guys have any questions? If you reach us out of our place of business, but you have any questions now?
I know. Okay. Today, I'm sure speaking for everyone, and I mean, obviously that's pretty hard seeing that. And I think you've all thought about it quite a bit. We've had, we have a city school committee that met regularly and Brian has been on it and Marty participates. And I believe even the last one, we, we even brought up this topic. So it hasn't been talked about. I think it probably would be timely to request a meeting to bring that group back together and.
That's what I've been asking, you know, bring it up for discussion again and see where we're going. There are a lot of smart people in this community and a lot of people willing to help, so.
Well, I'll kind of pile on up until the end of the meeting. Or not. But I, I just, Kevin and I talked a long time for the Friday. Yeah, Friday, Saturday, whatever day, it don't matter. And I told him that we've talked about probably every meeting, Wednesday, Saturday, about every, going to a school meeting. It kind of, yeah, yeah, kind of not. Where we're gonna find the money and the, I'll just, I just think we need to be done with the excuses on why we can't have one. That's kind of where I'm at. I mean, you know my opinion as a resource officer. It's always been that way. I think this makes it a serious business, you know, so. I know they bailed their help if they needed. I've talked to quite a few other businesses and business owners and private people in the last five days since that happened. There's a lot of support out there, so. I think that's what we need to do to get a task force or committee or number meeting, whatever we need to do, but I think we need to make priority of it. I'll be done this right now.
So, okay. I don't know if anything else that we can't love anything to add, but I just like.
Just getting more about.
Prove the concept of it. Definitely take a look.
That's a good topic. No, that is all we need to look into.
So Jordan reached out to Dr. Gray and. Schoolwork. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Greg, as well.
Anyone else who could speak in the public forum? Same will close public forum of the old business day through purchase and chairlift for library. All right. And discussion on chairlift, Andy, Jason. Um, are you wrong to whether I can?
Oh, I'm seeing.
I'm seeing.
Thank you.
I've seen.
Follow me back.
Very good. I think we're good. Are any discussion on the item? None, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to the ordinance number ten forty-nine point three point four. Ordinance in pending chapter fifty-three, speed, age regulations of the city code, the name, the reason, it is on south, the avenue, certain final reading. Go to approve. Okay. Name, B. They noticed, council, please vote. It is approved. Takes us to C. Credit paper, question number thirty-one for waste charging, silly improvements, date two from Williams Brothers Construction in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And very easy to approve. Second, Brian, Sandy. They noticed, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to D, approved tariff number twenty, REV for waste fair treatment, silly improvement, date two on Boomerang Corporation, United one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. And when? Approve. Second, name. They noticed, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to new business day, HR Green work for for GAS main services. Who approve? Brian, Jason.
I have a question. I know we've had a project in the last couple of months. We've had a different engineering firm do. For some of these, are we just in autopilot with HR Green? Are we actually checking with other people? I know that a lot of this stuff, HR Green's been involved in already. That's why we need forward, but is that kind of going to be our MO from now on? It's maybe, not that I have a problem with HR Green as a kind of approval, but to do our new deals for like tax dollars, I think we need to, like we talked about, check. So I don't know if this is just one of those ongoing that we're doing or if it's a, a new, a new thing. I'm getting every Jordan.
Yep, so the GIS training, that is something that we've been talking with HR Green for some time now. And because they are the ones that set up all of our current mapping for all of our sewers, store room, water, sanitary, our cemetery.
Well, that's what I thought this one was, where it just sparked a thought.
Yep. Yeah, so I.
Do our new deals.
I know Ryan is also looking at other classes and conferences, seminars that he can jump on to. That way he can learn for it. But with them doing majority, if not all of our mapping services, we thought it was best that Mike Wisp, who has been in charge of doing all of these services for us, that he comes and personally trains. That was something that I discussed with him, that we don't really want to get into the emotions of you guys doing it for us. We want to teach and train our, our current staff and employees how to do this, so they can do this ongoing and move forward with it in the future. But um.
That's what I thought.
For the second part of your question, yes, we are looking at other firms as well and we are looking at.
Just trying to keep everybody out, it's getting a little trendy for a while, not just engineering, but other like students. Yep, okay. Good enough, thank you.
Any other discussion? None, has to be vote. Seeing those are all approved?
Yeah.
Okay, that was really fast. Okay, so that puts us to the resolution forty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four. Resolution provides for a necessary amount of plan specification form for contract and that's the cost for the twenty twenty-four three improvement project and the thinking is therefore. Would you approve? Sort of, name. I think this. We have more. Any discussion? None, have to be vote. That is approved. Takes us to C, approved LOT, capital equipment revolving hotel motel tip and accounting for working for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We approve.
Okay.
The same. And notice, council, please vote. Approved. Takes us to D, approved five-day class C retail alcohol license for shop walk in our PBA, do you go to LD two twenty-seven? Back to the January eighteen, twenty-four, the January. Who approve? I am. Or Jason? Any discussion? Then is this?
Which one?
Is that?
I have the same.
Okay. Very good. Beach. Beach bash.
Very nice to talk about it. Could use a little beach bash.
Do you know other discussion, council, please vote? That's approved. Takes us to E, approved class C retail alcohol license for Timothy McLaughlin, DB one ball code forty-eight, National Legion, Nevada Iowa, one three three one six street, effect with January seventh. We approve. Even, same. Same as everyone. Are you all that? They none, have to be vote, B. Those are approved. Takes three, four, turning to D ministry here.
All over the last month, Karen and I, Karen and I have been working with the department on their budgets and that's been very, very good. And so it's that time of year again, so a lot of our days are, are revolve around budgets. And so this year, there's obviously some changes due to our insurance and um, the electricity that's flowing out as well. And uh, we also have our, our union negotiations that are coming around this year again. So those have been interesting to kind of budget into the future planning and figuring out how we're going to do all that. I had with Joe and then I'll talk with him about our trail projects. Did talk with HR Green about it because they were kind of curious about what, what we were going to be doing moving forward. So we're still trying to figure that out. Uh, we did have, get, get some quotes on the asphalt, knowing everything out and figuring out what we can do if we need to actually go through a bidding. Depending on the price, we may be able to get through the competitive bidding cycle rather than the, the traditional bid that we, we have to go out for and seek. I also talked there about underground storage tools. As everyone is aware, we do have those convenience stores that are going to be up and running here eventually. One concern that I do have is the underground things that are there and how they're not in compliance right now. And I don't think that they will be because of the age of, of those tanks and how long they've been underground. And talked with her about several other items on, on the list, such as um, those convenience stores and. I'm meeting with Tower Points, which is pertaining to the cell towers. They did send out another proposal, but there's still quite a bit of a loss that we would be seeing in a thirty-year span for them. And then had our standard monthly meetings with Main Street, except it's up by Los NBC, except on the eighty, eighty DC board. And then today I am with AK Systems Solutions and we can talk with them about where they're at. Currently, they're in the process of eating their Astro setup where they can deposit fifty thousand dollars for that deposit. And then um, they anticipate closing within sixty days. Should have assigned documents either tomorrow or Wednesday for everybody. I am hoping like more questions, if you have any. Do have my reports. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer. And it might be instant, but I'm getting a lot of questions about, you know, how many. And I'm like, are they not? You know, um, yeah, so right now they're working on installing the floor. They have a couple of the courts finished. They believe it'll take three to four days to finish the outside ring. I believe what they plan on doing is starting on the second floor here in the most, probably week or so. And they were anticipating we'd get three or four more staff of that foreign company to come. But uh, Saturday is when they're expecting them, but they did not end up coming. So they told Tim today that they plan on being here tomorrow, but with the weather, the way it is, I don't know if that would happen. They do plan on doing the turf last, but I know Rhonda has told them that they are starting basketball, I believe, January twentieth. And that is when they plan on being in, so they can start that and it's probably, so parts of it will be open January twentieth. I don't know when the full, full facility will be, it will be used, but on my own twentieth will be basketball.
Jordan, um, what's the timing on the lights?
I know our poles are, should be in tomorrow, tomorrow. Okay, uh, the lights are still.
Put them up by the end of the day. So you're gonna go out and do your.
Yeah.
Nothing else going on for your team, right?
So even though we have the poles, we do not receive the lights. We were told last week by Doug, he was the representative for Den Pro, that we should be in by the end of the month. We're hoping we can have those up at the end of the month. I think Joe has been working with DOT on figuring out how we're going to be getting them up, whether it's possible to DOT to custom them up. I think we would prefer the DOT to put them up just because we want to stay out of PCI away when we're working on things out there. But um, yeah, we're hoping first February they will be uh, closed too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's extremely dark right now out there. It is, yes.
Moving on to reports from my report. We think before the holidays, there was a meeting of all the Story County mayors of the which is supervisors. And about half the mayors just seemed to have turned over the coming, their last new vote. And met, met with some of the legislators to talk about the upcoming session and some of the priorities they anticipate. And then I have been asked to serve on the League of Cities Legislative Committee again for this question. So definitely going to be following what's going on down there. And then Story County Emergency Management, just those meetings, working on finalizing that budget. And there's a budget hearing on that, so I think finalize what they're going to do for the emergency management commission. That any question for me? On three reports, one, I guess, welcome, and thirteen, sorry, I didn't have him. Um, out three reports.
Austin, Kevin stole a lot of my thunder from my report. So that's what I need to do. Two, this last week, the MPA, which stands for Midwest Poliers, sort of days, had their annual banquet. And we wanted us to hold them. For being our first one in a while, as it's died, you know. And um, I briefly talked to Marla, she's gonna. For being our first one in a while. I'm excited, you know, and, um, I'd briefly talk tomorrow. She's gonna. Take a picture. We got a plaque and stuff, and I think we're gonna have a picture with her since the rodeo, rodeo of the year this year too. And we got full of the year. We're gonna do kind of a joint little venture. We're gonna throw it at Marla and have her. Do her magic on it in the, in the ride. So we're pretty proud of that for pulling together so quick and. We're gonna have to figure out how to do it better and better this year that people can get to begin, but we're pretty excited about that with the spry, obviously. Means we're at the, we're pretty positive.
Just like to say kudos to our pretty folks that put up the very nice Christmas decorations there and also took them down very kindly. So thanks for all your work on that. Great. We appreciate it.
It's been a very annoying.
Nice. Yeah.
Hi, great, I'm a fire teacher. I'll just rip this bandana off. Uh, there's, uh, plans in place to have three liquor stores. About five block area. Um, we are working with those folks to ensure that the building comes up, you vote first before it's been certified. Here's the one to construct in good rest. Uh, we'll tell you that we're kind of doing a little bit of research because, um, these things are popping up all over Iowa. I have other fire chiefs that are telling me about liquor stores coming in, uh, seeing some of this, uh. Watch the, the T A C, uh, so we're not sure if they're positioning, again, ready for any sort of changes in the code. Um, uh, there is a little bit of involvement with crypto ATM stuff like that. Uh, we're doing our, uh, find out when we're loaded and stuff, and they got pretty little store, so. So, uh, I didn't want you to think we were sleeping in the hill on that. Um, and then the second thing is, uh, boom, uh, Julie King was thirty-five and he's been, uh, the folks over there, uh, and. When all the weekly leaves and all the spotlight leaves, uh, the plan is spend a morning with the chief, uh, over there because, uh. Uh, what we find in the fire service and the professional fire chiefs and do the, the, his spending a half. Chief after regular incident and having coffee, uh, kind of brings them, brings them into a normal plane and make sure that, uh, the product. So, um, they're doing a great job over there, uh, very difficult situation. And then the last thing is I have to follow up. Uh, I'll be working with the Fairwood folks on Frisky Hulk, making sure that the fire code. Actually, signs are installed there and that was the only thing holding them up, so, but that is all I have.
Ray, have you been in this? Yeah, so to speak, kind of big game, started working on, do you want inspection or are they just winging it until you go again?
No, both Ryan and I have been in, I mean, in a process, you can't even shut me Brian into the, to the law with true, so. Um, we provided the list that we had from, uh, when we were looking at abandonment procedures. We, we started with that. What their plans were to replace the storefront siding and give it a, a better look, uh, deal with some of the electrical stuff over age that is kind of. Uh, exposed ceiling tiles that were leaking and, and stuff, so. Um, plans are to have a safe building and then, you know, uh, the liquor and tobacco licenses forward. If that's their, their medical point, uh, but, um. Like I said, uh, I mean, I was talking to Westmore Fire Marshall and I've been watching you and, uh, it just seems like these are popping up and they're. Uh, all of the state of Iowa. So like I said, I, we anticipate there's, they're, they're standing up for any Q C law changes or what. Have the store already, but we don't know for sure. We've got to follow up with the votes. Yeah.
Anything else I can do? Yeah, but. Pretty nice library report.
I don't really have much other than what was my report. I'm going to try to send those down. So before I send out those, our activity for December, we had four hundred and twenty-three balls, about fifty percent of those are still generated, we've got to stop. Um, and then, uh, I had mentioned the speeding concerns we had on West Third over by West End and we had a feature on there. Oh, we did a two week study and we're gonna analyze that to kind of make a more focused, uh, speed approach. Uh, what you might not know is there's eleven thousand vehicles that pass that in two weeks, so. Uh, I'm Nancy working on making that more readable and more easy to, to, uh, you and go for them, so. Other than that, our, you know, Skyler's done four days at the academy, so everything's going fine. Has about fifteen more weeks to go, but, uh, we should be good. I'll answer anybody.
Thanks. Good evening, council. Uh, the previous meeting, um. A bit of time I brought up the N X code and updating that as far as heating and things like that, I was able to protect. But I watched it, looked some notes and stuff like that, um. The P M L and stuff that we raised to is still. Not considerably lower, but it's lower than the majority of Milwaukee, Indian, Des Moines, things like that. Um, I don't think they're, the raising of those prices is so high that it's gonna limit people from completing these projects, but. You know, those, they needed to be raised in an appropriate manner, um, for a fence project, for example. Uh, that was previously twenty dollars. Me going out there one time just to look is more than twenty dollars, right? So, and, you know, it's not very much effort to look at a fence, right? As it even up line it, it's kind of the follow up and, and beginning process that I have to do. To double, you know, just to make sure that the property lines are appropriate and they're not putting up those clearly in the neighbor's yard, things like that, so. That was in essence why Ray did not, uh, seem appropriate, um. What came up, uh, from what I watched, um, was the right of way license excavation permit. We would like, we wanted to raise that and that's a big thing that I want raised. When people are working on our right of way, we have a lot of utilities and we have a lot of data that, right? So for our right of way license was for the company to apply for every year in order to work on our right of way. Uh, where we kind of had some, not issues, but things brought forward or when people are tying into our roadway with new, uh, approaches with aprons and things like that. I was having them do excavation work, weren't very much, but. With that work being done, tying into our roadway, we run the risk of the road settling, breaking, things like that. So what I would like to do, instead of doing the deposit and, uh, a thousand dollars and returning five hundred and keeping five hundred. I would like to, uh, and I'm reaching out to Aaron about it, but I would like to do a bond of five thousand dollars. And instead of it, you know, under the license, I would like it to be under the excavation permit. And so that way it would be a five thousand dollar bond per job site. And the other thing I would like to bring up with Aaron is the, uh, utility right of ways. So everybody can at least name four addresses here in town where a utility company has left, uh, media cable laying everywhere. Uh, I found people in K T that have those certain logos on their vehicle, have them to take a look at it. And the job site goes unnoticed for another three, four weeks. With this bond on each job site with those utility companies as well, we can act up that bond, have that taken care of. And utilize that bond amount to accomplish that. And then a little more looking through, a lot of other cities are doing evaluation of the project and that's how they're adopting their permits and a couple of that. Ours is a flat B, in which I think it should stay a flat B as well. I'll gladly answer any questions, but I'll have a much more girl write up for my next meeting after seeing. About where I would like to be. Any questions or anything like that for me?
I do, but I'm waiting.
Okay.
Let's just wait till you're ready to go, just start to hate.
Yeah.
Let me get.
Yeah.
I'll give you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do this, but.
We have Karen online. Do you have anything, Karen?
My phone is not working.
Okay. She's probably working on the budget, right? Okay, Brandon?
I don't have anything to add to our report unless there are any questions. Thanks for letting me join virtually with the weather today, so that's appreciated. What, was there a question? Sorry, I, I can only catch about fifty percent of what's being.
I think Mike was on there, but I don't see him.
Oh, yeah, Mike had to leave. Is there a question for Mike? Okay.
And Aaron, I'm.
Uh, good evening. No, I don't have anything to add. I, I echo Brandon's comment. Thank you for. Uh, technology and allowing me to participate virtually this evening. Uh, Mr. Corbin, great to see you on that side of the dais. I look forward to seeing you there, uh, in a few weeks.
Anything else before we adjourn? Back it in, Brian, all those in favor? Bye, bye. Any pros? We're gonna get the snow shovel warmed up.
Yes.